Just to let everybody know, this is live. It's not, I don't think it's gonna be stuck the feed in for another five minutes. Maybe they got stuff.
No app logs.
What do we want you to know?
Right. Yes, if you put out a few, then like 300 are gonna show up.
Were you around for the, uh...
Now you're really...
Were you...
Are you not a set of... It's more time than I'm talking about. Should you move around?
I should be much busier.
So, we're gonna take it in my mind.
Those are the side of town. He has, every time he sees you, he's like, "Oh, that's just... You lost your... So what's that outside, everything?
Hi. Just don't bump my thing. Oh, yeah.
All right. Uh, welcome to, uh, Select Board meeting for Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. I'll call this meeting to order. Um, few items on the docket, the most, uh... The one that's gonna take the longest is dealing with, um, select board vacancy. But before we attend to that, um, there's a public notice, a public hearing that I, I wanna get out of the way. Um, we had our first public hearing on, uh, the ordinances for the town landing. Um, we're going to, the proposed change to the ordinances to add the following items to our current ordinances for the town landing. Uh, number nine, any watercraft, kayak, canoe, dinghy, et cetera, left at the landing must have the owner's last name and phone number clearly written on it. Contact the landing overseer for more information, 603-772-5070. So with that, uh, I will open up if there are any public comments on this proposed change to the town ordinances dealing with the landing. None? Any other comments? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing for the town landing. Excellent, thank you. So, um, first order of business, we're gonna take care tonight, uh, take care of tonight. As many of you know, um, Jackie Solbani last week resigned from the position on the select board. Um, under... Under our state ordinances, and I just wanna make sure we're clear about the process. State ordinance, uh, 66963, uh, which requires that vacancies in the board of selectmen shall be filled by appointment made by the remaining selectmen. Whenever the selectmen fail to make such appointment, the superior court or any justice may arrive on petition of any citizen of the town, and after such notices, the court shall be unreasonable, may appoint a suitable person to fill the vacancy. So, uh, with little luck, we won't have to go to court to fill this vacancy. Um, as many of you know, uh, we had a vacancy several years ago when Chris Hutchins stepped down. Um, the requirements under the statute are that the remaining members of the select board, uh, fill the vacancy if they can. Um, and that was, was accomplished. There's no formal or statutory process to do this. Um, we're gonna follow a similar procedure as we did for that. Um, there were eight candidates, um, that submitted names at town hall who expressed interest in, uh, the position. Uh, what we're going to do is, given that we have eight names, we're going to give each of the candidates five minutes to address the public, obviously both here, just the select board, um, and the town via, via the streaming service that we have. Um, talk about why they're interested in the position, uh, what they've done around town, qualifications, whatever they wanna talk about. Um, after each candidate has gone through, we'll, we'll open it up for public comment from the general audience. Anybody has questions, we'll allow them to ask. At that point in time, uh, the board will then deliberate, um, and typically it goes where one board member will make a nomination. Uh, presumably the second will either make a second nomination, or second the nomination, or will not. If they do not, then obviously we don't have a majority for that person, uh, and then we'll leave it open, uh, until there is, in this case, only two, uh, two other, uh, members of the board that unanimously is consideration for one of the proposed candidates. Um, the eight that submitted their names, if there's anybody else who wants to throw their name into the hat tonight, they're more than welcome to do so. We'll get to you at the end of the list. Um, as many of you know, the last time we did this, it was actually number three candidate that we actually were able to come to an agreement for the position. Um, we'll see what happens tonight, but that is the process that we will go through. Uh, any questions from the general audience before we begin? No? You guys making this easy? Great. Uh, with the eight candidates, uh, before the meeting, I drew names out of a hat to, uh, come up with the order for the candidates, just to, you know, make it nice and fair. Um, so we're, I'll work down through the order I selected them. If they're here, they can address. If they're not here, it doesn't mean that we won't consider them. Uh, there are certainly, uh, very good candidates on this list, and, and, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll have a good discussion about it tonight. So with that, oh, um, one other thing. I, again, I'm gonna, I'm going to do my best to hold the candidates to five minutes, given that we have eight candidates here. Um, so, um, uh, when, when there's about, I don't know, 15 or 20 seconds left, I'll just raise my gavel. I don't wanna interrupt, but at the same time, I don't, eight candidates, people going on for 10 to 15 minutes, we're gonna be here a real long time. So, uh, with that, the first candidate up is Tom Grellin.
Thank you, Cameron, and thank you, uh, select member, Herman. Uh, I take the time to, uh, just tell you about myself. When I submitted my letter, uh, for intent, I went over my career, I went over my, uh, my years living here. My wife and I live on Hudson Street. We've been here for almost 18 years. I'm entering my 34th year in law enforcement. What that allows me to do to contribute to this town is that I'm very familiar with collaborating with other, uh, organizations. Um, I rose through the ranks at the city of Portsmouth, where I helped to instill, uh, confidence in the police department through my, uh, cultivating relationships with the community. I started a downtown merchants association. I worked with, uh, schools. I was the first, uh, I was the police athletic league director, and an awful lot in the city that I worked in. And I've always worked for municipality. I lived in that town as well, uh, while I did that. Later on in my career, the, the paramount achievements of my career was when I became the, uh, director, commander of the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. See, in here, I spent the majority of my career protecting children. What I, what I also did is I, I, um, inserted myself in the workings of the agency and how I respected the fact that my pay came from taxpayer dollars, my organization was through federal grants, and, uh, one of my major achievements when I was a manager was I approached the state for the first time in 20 years of the task force, I was able to get state funding. Now, I know that that was our money, but I also, our money, meaning us taxpayers, but I know that the organization had needs, just like a town has needs. The other thing that I've done is, is I practiced the, the criminal side of laws, if that's correct, uh, which is pretty obvious, but, uh... My retirement job, uh, when I retired 2018, uh, from full-time status, I'm part-time investigator for the county attorney's office. An interesting segment there that applies to towns is, uh, county attorney's office is responsible for, uh, investigating complaints of, uh, of, uh, public integrity. What does that mean? Well, that means when, you know, boards such as select boards, or, or, uh, conservation committees, or, or boards of adjustment, or anything like that, hey, wrongdoing, county attorneys are responsible for investigating. I've done that. What that's allowed me to do is to apply my research of law, my application of law, my investigative issues, and trying to come to a best resolution for everyone. Sometimes it has to do with, unfortunately, the public officials done wrong. Sometimes it's just a misunderstanding of what the rule is and what your role is. So that's opened my eyes to what is, is required. The other thing that's kept my eyes open in my many years is that I was born to a family that was in a very small town. When I was young, it was a small town like Newfield. Uh, it has grown and developed into a bigger town, and I hope Newfield doesn't become, quite frankly. Uh, but what it also did is my parents instilled in me a strong community spirit. They taught my sister and I, told my sister and I to get involved in our community, and to always, uh, give back to your community in whatever organizations. So in my professional career, I, uh, was a member of many civic organizations. When I was a member, I became the leader of the board. Locally here, I participated in the, the most recent, uh, research to get a new police station here. Uh, and when I sat on that board, uh, I, once again, was, was not able to lead that, uh, lead that committee. Unfortunately, we didn't get the police station we hoped to introduce to you, chief, but, uh, we did make, hopefully we made some changes, so that's where we're at today. And I know that might become an issue again. So I really hope through all of my years of, of working municipalities, my dedication of a small town, uh, my, my time that I have now, since I've left full-time employment and now part-time, should allow me to contribute to this, to, to, to the, uh, to the board. I think I have, I know that I have a level head, I have an unblemished record in, in my, uh, 34 years of, of law enforcement. Uh, I get positive feedback from everybody, I have great relationships with people in community. I, uh, know and met an awful lot of people here in the 18 years we've been here, uh, from, you know, uh, from people that have been here forever, from economists to, uh, to people that just moved into town. I try to make friends with everyone, try to keep everybody safe. That's, that has always instilled in me as a child, and then through my career, to keep everyone safe, and then to make this a great community. I love this town. Uh, my wife and I, uh, love everything about this town. The first, first, uh, winter we moved here, uh, we walked up to the celebration, and, uh, I don't know who was in charge of it, but right on cue, when we got up here, it started to snow. From right then, maybe we made the right choice to come to this town. So I really hope that I get the game of sport. I hope that, uh, you'll be happy when I sit on the board, that, uh, I will listen to everything, I will come to the best resolution. I will listen to everyone on the board, but I also acknowledge that there are laws and there are rules we all have to follow. And I hope to, uh, I hope to be the next board member.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Tom. Excellent sense of timing. Uh, next up will be Jane Walsh.
I will keep this very short. You guys know who I am. I took five minutes a month ago. I don't need to take more time. I'm, I love to work with the gentlemen. Um, I think I've been in this town all the time. Um, I do really valued service. Um, I ran out of it because I wanted to serve. So, um, hopefully you'll consider that. I don't wanna take up too much time, I have a lot of names on there, and I chalked a lot over last month. So I'll, I'll keep it very short this week for you. So I hope you're, for your consideration, and I will, um, let everybody else have a little bit, kinda, more time.
Thank you, Jane. Appreciate that. Uh, next up on the list, Rodney Anderson. Rodney? All right. Uh, next up, Steve Yavitch.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Uh, Karen and I bought the house here 13 years ago as a summer place, and we fell in love with it, and decided to move our residence up here 10 years ago now, as it turns out. We love this town. Early on, I got involved with the celebration committee. I started working with Main Street Guard. I've worked with Mike on the citizens committee to, uh, help select Chief Young to the, to the police department. I, three years ago, I got on the zoning board of adjustment, and last year I was elected trustee of trust fund, so... I have some idea of how the, the town works. It's a little different from other places I've lived. But, uh, in my career as a finance and IT professional, I've done a lot of work with contracts, with managing people, collaborating with diverse groups, and I, I think I can do a good job for, of this, this position for the remainder period. I ask for your consideration. Thank you.
Uh, next up is Betsy here. Betsy Coe. All right. We're moving through, fast to the next question. Great. Uh, next up is Kevin Davis.
Hi, I'm Kevin Davis. Uh, I've lived in the town about four years, four years in, uh, in the summer. Um, I was married here in Newfields, in my home, my wife's, we moved here to Newfields. My wife's family has been here 13 years. So we moved here four years ago because of my wife's family. And, um, I guess unlike, this is an unusual speech, but unlike everybody who's standing up here and talking, uh, about themselves, I have no expectation of being selected, uh, tonight. I have a very, uh, diverse point of view from the two gentlemen that currently serve on the board. I want to, uh, first start off by apologizing to the chief for, uh, his, uh, team having to go pick up my, uh, political signs, which I posted, not realizing at the time that they were political signs required by certain things to say who sponsored them and all these other things. So despite the conspiracy theories, my wife and I did not know that we were required to do that. The moment the letter came out from the secretary of state, we took the website down, we called them the next morning, we learned exactly what we were supposed to do, and then we went from there. So the intent for me was certainly to have shock value, to get people to pay attention to the issues that I think are very important, uh, that are happening here in the town. I own a small business in New Hampshire. I'm a lifelong person in New Hampshire. I was born and raised, uh, lived here my whole life, and, uh, I think for me, what drove, drew me into, uh, being part of the system here, if you will, was the, uh, actions taken by, uh, the current leadership here against the Vern family. And I know there's been a lot of great spin about how it's, they're doing wrong, and it's all about safety, and for those of you who spent, if, I hope no one has, but for me, who spent the time to watch every single one of those videos about all the public hearings that came to the town, for me and my wife, it was very important to try to put some diversity in the board, and to have another point of, uh, of opinion to be heard instead of the consistent, uh, opinion that seems to predicate the politics here in town. So that was my reason. I did call the town and put my name on it for no other reason but to stand up here and sort of apologize for any wrongdoing that we did when we put our signs up and all that, but so that people could hear it from us, that there wasn't anything else belonging to that other than our desire to create some activities so that people would pay attention, and, uh, to read the things that we thought were wrong here. Uh, again, we don't, we won't be selected, but, uh, I think that's pretty fair to say. However, I thought it was important, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to stand up here.
Uh, next up, uh, Mike Kessler.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Mike Kessler. Uh, in, in looking over, uh, what I've done here in the town, I've realized it's actually 19 years this week that I've been a resident. I live here over in Samborn Drive with my, uh, wife and two children. Both my children have graduated from NES, they both graduated from Exeter High School, and most recently, my daughter graduated from UMH. So very involved in the town. We moved here, uh, like I said, in 2004. Um, the first group I got, uh, I got active with was the NYAA. Started off as a coach, became, uh, coordinator, became vice president, and then finally the president of the NYAA for the last couple of years. Um, and in that time, uh, you know, we, we really focused on keeping it a recreation, uh, recreation department for every kid in town. We made sure that, um, you know, we operated on a budget, uh, that kept the cost low. I mean, $40 to play baseball, you will find that anywhere around, okay? Um, we, uh, so we made sure that we gave, we gave scholarships to those kids who, again, the $40 was gonna be too much. We were gonna be sure they got to the league. So, so again, focused on community, uh, working with NES. We coordinated a lot of activities, uh, with the principal over there, and we've had the fields right behind there. Everything had to be coordinated. Um, and then in 2006, uh, I started with the celebration committee. Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm actually Santa Claus. I did not need that stuff. But I think I was chosen because I don't need a pillow. So, um, and then, uh, and then I got involved with more, uh, and, and the veterans of town, I myself, uh, a, uh, US Navy veteran. Um, so, again, very active in the community. Um, as Steve said recently, most recently chaired the committee for chief of police selection. You know, where we, we had a great group, nine peoples of, of varying opinions. I mean, we had a very, talk about diversity, we had a very diverse group of those nine people, and we were able to come together and, and make a determination on, on who's representative, uh, or who we're gonna refer to the board, uh, to be our chief of police. Um, it was not easy, uh, took some time, uh, a lot of discussions, but we were able to work everything out civilly and, and came to an agreement at the end, which was, you know, I chalked it as a, as one, for sure. Um, so if I'm selected, uh, you know, you can expect a common sense approach to, to issues that we're, that we're seeing. Um, three ways I'm gonna communicate is through, uh, face-to-face, which I most prefer. Phone calls and emails are fine. Um, and, you know, I, I see what's happening on Facebook. I'm not happy with it. I will not respond on Facebook. If people wanna talk to me, please come see me and talk to me. Okay? And I appreciate everybody's attention tonight, and thank you for the consideration.
Last name on the list is Larry Valenta. Is that you? Is Larry here? No? Okay. Well, before we get into the public comment, I do want to thank everybody who has put their name out there. It's not always easy to come and put yourself in front of the public, or volunteer for service, whether it's with a, you know, a nonprofit organization or a municipality like this. As a town, I think we're extremely lucky, in a sense, to have so many people who are interested in a position like this, and who are active in the community and volunteer to serve in the community. So I do want to thank each and every one of you who have volunteered to fill this position. So with that, I will open it up for the public comment. Any questions, anyone from the public has, any comments? We're open for, try to keep it remaining to the candidates. And with that, are there any questions, comments from the general public? Ah, this is a lot easier than last time. All right. So with that, I guess then we'll leave it to the board. I'll stick my neck out and I'll go, and I will make a nomination. I will nominate Mike Kessler for the board position.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. You guys made it far too easy this time than the time before. So thank you again for everybody. I'm surprised it was so quick and dirty. Mike, you will have to take an oath of office. Do that tomorrow. We won't have you as part of this board meeting tonight.
I'm sure.
If anybody has any questions, concerns, issues, please contact us after the meeting. But thank you very much again to everybody who came out tonight, put their name in the hat for consideration. I do hope you all look at other positions in town. This position will be up in March. It will be for a full term. So Mike is completing the last year of Jackie Salvani's term. So the election, unlike what Hobie had to do, which was run for every year. He runs every year. The position, that position will have a three-year term attached to it come March. So just so everybody's clear about that now, that's why, you know, it won't be another year. All right. So with that, then, I think we'll get to our regular business. You're all very welcome to stag. You're all very welcome not to stag. But thank you very much for coming up. Next up on the agenda is New Market Fire Rescue. So we have, currently, we have mutual aid for New Markets, the town of Newfield, for fire rescue and E M T services. There's a letter of understanding that we sign every year with respect to this. Any questions or comments about that? I will make a motion to sign the letter of understanding of the town of Newmarket for our fire and emergency rescue. Is that all in favor? Aye. What's it, do you have it? Thank you. So, can I pass the, 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 the? Revenues and expenses, this is a light, light item.
One thing to note, Sue just informed me that our provider for cemetery landscaping has dropped us. She's informed the cemetery trustees. So we're gonna have to find somebody to do stuff before Memorial Day. Hopefully, the cemetery trustee will move on that quickly. But I'll reach out to them and just say, you know, even if they find somebody on short notice, we don't necessarily have to go to bid for that can just get it done before Memorial Day. We'll try to do that, and then they can always go up to bid for the other contract after Memorial Day. So we at least can get that done and hopefully not have a problem for the event itself. Any other questions or comments on revenues, expenses?
No, so basically, all issues.
They'll just come in late, and so she makes the adjustments for the most part. Thank you. I think we're, we're doing pretty good, actually, though. Really good.
Very good.
Yeah, yeah. And then, I don't know, you probably saw the email with Bob Goslin, it resolved it quickly, that was great, so.
James, what's your thoughts?
Last item on the agenda, at least the formal agenda, is meeting minutes from the last meeting?
Two items on, just in terms of minutes, they're not changes, but I just have to do some follow-up here. One is, you know, we talked about the crosswalk at the last meeting. Yeah, yeah. And then Chief got data from Department of Transportation on it. And I know this was, this is an ongoing issue, but it's certainly based upon the data and the discussions Chief had about, in order to change the speed limit on Main Street, the state DOT would have to do a traffic survey. And the risk there is, and actually, according to the data, the risk may be real, that instead of lowering the speed to twenty-five miles an hour, they actually might raise it to thirty-five miles an hour, given the traffic data on that road. And I mean, at this point in time, I don't know what your thoughts are, but my thought is to not take the risk.
I didn't ask for any survey.
Yeah, no, I think, I think, I think it would probably not be worth the risk of the town to do that.
I agree.
I mean, the traffic is, the, is it eighty-five? The eighty-five percent speed is thirty-three miles an hour, which is a couple miles an hour over the thirty. But that kind of data, the Department of Transportation, certainly in all their reports and studies that they do, they're inclined to try to match the speed limit with the natural speed of people through that area, which is the risk of them then moving it up to thirty-five. So the other item, did you have something else on you?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Chief, you had some options. Did you have the under signs, additional signage options, curables, or?
Yeah, they gotta be, put the thirty mile per hour speed limit sign on Main Street as you turn or left onto Main Street from eighty-seven. There's no speed limit sign there. There's one further down on Exeter Road as you come to a forty or thirty. But residents or motorists that drive through that come down eighty-seven and they take a left on Main Street, there is no thirty mile per hour sign on it. So they were gonna come out, find the location that was in front of somebody's house, dig save it, and they told me it might be two or three weeks and a week ago to put that in.
Were there other options available for the crosswalk signage?
We have a couple options. We can use the signs that we have that are in bad shape, or we can potentially look at Eakin signs that Exeter Newmarket have. Those are expensive, and those bring a burden of our town or our grant. I am looking into that for school.
Find out what kind of money you can get for a grant on that?
No, all the grants right now, we're looking at closed until probably the end of the year, early next year. All the grants that haven't been opened and are now closed that we applied for, and that was not one of the things that we applied for.
So I have no issues putting a school or trying to sign up at that crosswalk up there and at the school.
The next grant is.
So the power to work that just to re-vidicate any potential threat. Could you do some research? I can do, I have some preliminary, but they were my year old when I first entered into it, the school. But that's something that we'll, we'll get some quotes.
Just one other item that I want to mention was, we voted the last meeting to move forward with the sheriff's auction with respect to the Hazel property. And since then, the water department sent an invoice to the town. No, there are also outstanding water fees associated with the property. Now, those don't fall under the same category as the town because the water department is a separate entity from the town. I informed legal counsel just to make him aware of the outstanding invoices for the water.
Did our work, they put them in there?
I think that they have a lean against it, but Derek, and I sent it to Derek just to make sure he's aware of it. He said that's not a law fallout in the whole auction and the, in the process that comes after the auction. So it shouldn't be a problem.
Do you have any time for that?
Yeah. Any changes, edits, minutes?
Two issues, okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three select board minutes as drafted.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any other business? Do you have?
No.
No other comments? All up to the general public? Anything up there? Somebody want to tell us? Be aware? Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn. So, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.